First, we will have a public hearing on home application. Chris Stettler?
Please talk season in. Now, all of these are required to send to the local application. As many of you, most of you know, the borough has been operating a housing rehabilitation program since the late 1970s. We now have 22 people on our waiting list and we have funds for probably another two to three houses. There is an opening for home program funds, which is due on the beginning, in the beginning of June. We're proposing to submit an application for $350,000, which will allow us to do seven to 10 houses. They tell us to estimate low so that it looks like we do more, which is what we're going to do. Unfortunately, since this was all described to you when we did our CDVG public hearings, our cost per unit has gone, our construction cost per unit has gone up to about $33,050. We have more houses which need a little bit more work. We have more houses that end up having to, we have to pay prevailing wage. We're still addressing lead paint issues. We have, our delivery costs are about $3,750. That's to get someone through the process and that's all the staff that's involved in it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, any comments that you might have, any problems you might have or might have heard with the program, so that we can submit this application in a timely fashion because you will be asked to act on a resolution to authorizing the submission of the application at your next meeting.
How many houses do we normally do a year, Chris?
Depends on how much money we have.
Okay.
There have been years when we've done two or three. There have been years when we've done seven or eight. The last home contract we started working on in, drawing that money in 2017, and we just finished it and we did 12 properties.
Okay.
We needed to supplement some of the properties with CDVG funds, just to make it work out, but we are doing that.
And most of these are elderly? Or is it mixed?
Majority of the people are elderly. We do get some younger people now and then. We do get some people in their 50s, which are not elderly yet, but, and it's usually one or two-person households. And they are all over the borough. Right now, probably the most we have done have been in the northeast corner of the borough. There seem to be a lot of people there, you know, ladies who've lost their husbands, who grew, who raised their families in these houses and now are living on social security and there's no one there to help them maintain it. So the project will bring the house into compliance with the property maintenance code, housing quality standards, so, you know, they're at least safe in their homes.
Okay. Anything else?
Any or so many questions?
Comments?
Comments. I think it's a wonderful program, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work on that. Okay. By the authority invested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Local?
Councilmember Tuttino.
Here.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Note that Councilmember Sokolowski is absent. Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Flanagan.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you.
I have one announcement. We did have an executive session this evening before a regularly scheduled meeting for legal matters. The first item on the agenda under presentations is sexual harassment awareness presentation. Erin Milburn, Victim Services Center at Montgomery County. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? Good. Thanks so much for inviting me. I will be brief, but I reached out to the mayor. So I work at Victim Services Center and April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Now, we are a day out, but our belief that promoting sexual violence awareness and prevention in the county is year-round. So they extended the invitation for me to share and I sent, I put pledges up for all of you to sign so we can take back to the office. But basically, we're an agency. We provide free services to all victims of crime, but I'll talk exclusively tonight about sexual violence. I did a few stats today for Conshohocken explicitly, so we know one in four women and one in six men are victims of sexual violence. And so I ran population numbers and that means it impacts 20% of your community right here. So it's a big public health issue and we know the profound impact of sexual violence extends not only to the direct victim, but to parents, to spouses, to children, so that 20% then becomes larger. So our agency, we offer free therapeutic services, free advocacy. We work with all of Montgomery County police departments in providing victim advocacy through the criminal justice process if people want to go that route. So we're just asking that communities talk about this issue. It's something that people don't like to talk about, but we're asking that pledge to start by believing, which sounds really simple, and why would people not do that? But we live in a culture where people do not, right? So rape culture and victim blaming is so prevalent. So we're hoping that with community members signing that pledge, that if someone discloses, that we'll start by simply believing and connecting them with services that can support them through the process. So with that being said, thank you so much for your time and for signing our pledge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, just, means if somebody comes to you, they'll.
Thank you. They have our. Thank you.
Thank you, babe. I need to say that's another.
The next item on the agenda is to conduct an interview for the position of the zoning board hearing alternate. Mr. Marison? Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. How are you?
Good, good. So, Donna, where would you like to be on the zoning board?
Reason I would like to serve on the zoning board on the alternate position is I feel that over the years I've been involved with the community for the last 40 years as a voter and been always been number one concerned about how our town has been developed in the community and how it is being developed now. And I'm more concerned that to be a advocate where I can convince the voters of Conshohocken to come out to meetings more often, just not only for special meetings like earmarked ones where you have community people, environment, knocking on doors, pressuring them to come out. You need to be here because we want you there. Because I attend many of zoning board meetings that were big ones in town where you're concerned about traffic issues and no one shows up at them meetings. But when you have options of other ones, you have community people show up at them. Because I feel some, when we do a small building rehab to a new rehab, like four or five more additional cars, that's more traffic to Conshohocken also. And people should not only just look at that as not a problem in our town, because them cars can come across the bridge or come up Elm Street or come down Fayette Street to go wherever that office or that building may be. And a lot of people in town need to start looking at that. And as I'm saying that, you know, we have some buildings coming up rehabbing them and putting them into nice new style buildings that make them work for our community to make it look nice. And a lot of people don't understand sometimes with that type of rehab in town, that them cars do come out to be some problems in our traffics. And my major, my major concern is be more visible with people in the community because I see the outreach to the community is what is more important to our town.
Thank you.
Donna, what are some of the organizations you've been involved with?
In the borough.
Conshohocken, Little Lake.
Yes, yes. I've been on the board for five years. This is my 10th year anniversary with the buildup, buildup fight. I brought them here 10 years ago, so that's this year's 10 years. Been involved with the community days at the Fellowship House, been involved with the Donald Freo tournaments in the borough for the last 20 years. And if I add before that, it would be 30 years then, when I really did the Donald Freo, I took off a couple of years because changed administration and I came back. And I did help the new mayor with some of the events that he has done in our community and I'd have done stuff at Conshohocken BFW, community stuff, like we'll be doing very shortly, on May 27th, I think it is, we're going to be putting the flags out on all the graves in our community. And soapbox therapy for 30 years at the bottom of the hill, picking up the nice little heavy cars and having so much fun every year with that. Been about Special Olympics, was a Special Olympic person myself and very, little bit more involved, but not too much.
Thank you.
What else? Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Stokely. I got a little laundry to do, Mr. Stokely. You know, my record has, I stand proud to be a Conshohocken person and I'm proud to care about this community and care more about the land development in the borough. And we have to really start looking at the people who are serving on the boards, start working better with community people, start talking to community people. I feel if you're on the zoning board or the planning commission or any of the commissions, that the people who are appointed to them committees should be really outreaching to the voters of the town, road by road, street by street, saying, hey, do you really want this in your neighborhood? Every time you get a land development going on in country or a zoning board issue going in country, you do not hear from any of the major people who are sitting on the board before the meetings asking what your personal opinions are. You only hear it when you're at that meeting or before that meeting. And even with the people who are for it or against it, you never hear these people talking about what they want and what they don't want until that night of that meeting. I like to hear that before a meeting or before that time.
Okay. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is High Street Conshohocken One LLC zoning hearing board application. Good evening.
Good evening. Allison Zarro, on behalf of High Street Conshohocken One LLC. This evening, we're here to present to you generally a plan that's been filed. It's scheduled in front of the zoning hearing board on May 13th for several variances. This property is located at Washington Avenue. Oak Street is essentially on the east side of this site. It's between the SEPTA rail line and the Schuylkill River. The property would be redeveloped for multifamily apartments over parking and some surface parking. With me this evening, I have Mike and Chris Senkiver, who are representatives of the applicant, and Bill Reardon, who's the civil engineer from Bowler. We thought it might make sense to give you a little overview of what's proposed there and Mike has a PowerPoint that he'd like to share with you.
Okay.
And also to clarify, the use itself is permitted by conditional use. This is in the SP3 district. The variances that we are seeking are dimensional in nature and also related to the floodplain, considering that this is in floodplain area.
My name is Chris Senkiver and I'm with the developing entity, High Street Residential. I've been a principal with them for 20 years and I'm excited tonight to talk to you about the project that we're looking to develop along the river on the James Neve site. As you all probably know, this is the site that we're talking about. It's at the end of Washington Street where Oak Street and Washington Street will eventually connect when that crossing happens. As a real estate developer, we do things a little differently than some of our peers. We feel that it's very important that a project, for a project to be successful, that it fits within the community that it's going to be developed in, that it has to feed off the surrounding area, has to feed off the character of the town that it's being developed in, not only the town as it stands now, but also the historical side of things. And we have, along those lines, brought in an architect that has the same philosophy. They're located in Baltimore, Ward, Copland, Mott, and I'm recently, I've recently used them on a project in Pittsburgh along the river as well, a very similar project, and it's been well-received out there. So, let's see if I can get this full screen here, sorry. So one of the things that the architect does is he studies the history of the town and the area. And he studied the history of Conshohocken and all the towns up and down the Schuylkill River. And it was pretty clear that the classic representation of development back then were these old stone mill buildings. And we thought, wow, how can we incorporate that feel into a project that's a little bit more contemporary? So we thought of these modern mill buildings. And the site is a long, narrow site, as you sort of know. So what we decided to do was to take these modern mill buildings made of stone, run them north-south, and then connect them with the, a more contemporary connector and a base that the entire project would sit on to raise it up out of the floodplain. We also looked at, you know, some precedents for what buildings, mill buildings would look like and some, and modern mill buildings. And these are some pictures that show that. Additionally, we thought it was very important to connect to the train station and the surrounding properties. The new train station being built essentially adjacent to our property, we felt it made sense to move the entrance to our building down to the center, which would be right here, and allow this entire area to pre, to essentially enliven that area. And when the commuter gets off that train, there's an arrival. They have this feeling of arrival, that we've arrived in Conshohocken. So we're doing that with hardscaping and landscaping, et cetera. Additionally, in talking with staff, it was pretty clear that one of the areas that we were missing was a connection down to the river. The building is a little bit long and narrow because of the site and we felt that it made more sense to have some connection down to the river. So at that point, we took the building that was closer to the property line here, slid it west, allowed for a visual as well as a actual connection down to the river. Staff also felt like because this was raised up on a podium because of the floodplain situation, that we needed to somehow enliven and activate that area so that it didn't just become this open area that nobody ever utilized. And while the train station and the entrance area did some of that, they felt it made sense to figure out another way to do that. So what we did was we took this area here and we, it can be parking, but we've kept it out of our parking counts. And we're going to be able to program that for things such as food trucks, pop-up markets, events that would happen there. And there'll be, you know, bollards down here, this will be a hardscaped area where you'd be able to put tables and chairs. There'll be benches along here and it will allow for a better connection with the adjacent neighbor. It'll allow us to also to get down to the river and to connect to the river trail that would run across there. Now, since the entire building is up on a podium, if you look at some of the projects that were developed years ago further down the river, the multifamily stuff, when you're in your apartment and you're looking down out of the apartment, you're looking down at parking. They kept the podium out, so you just look right down to the ground. In this project, we're going to run that podium the entire length, so there'll be parking, you know, underneath the podium, it'll be protected, but it'll also allow for these larger courtyard areas that the residents will be able to utilize, will be able to see the river, as well as large inviting steps that will come down off the courtyard that will connect to the river trail. So here's some 3D imagery that allows you to see the scale of the project, the relationship to the train station and the surrounding properties. And I'll just scroll through these a little bit. That's sort of a view over top of Oak Street, looking at the project. This would be the entrance to the building and here's your new train station directly Similar view, but down towards the east. This would be a view south-facing and you can see the podium area, the courtyards up above, the steps coming down, connecting it to the river trail. Another shot of the amenity space for the project. And then a view from the Fayette Street Bridge with a lot of trees there. I think they were aggressive on the trees. One of the things that we wanted to make sure that we do is not just build a project that on the outside looks like one thing, but inside looks differently. So we wanted to keep the interiors, use the same materials that you'll find on the inside, that you'll find on the outside, use them on the inside. So here's just some pictures of the interior design. These are some precedents that our architect brought to us of how they were thinking this project might look. This would be a two-story, this would be the two-story entrance that's across from the train station. So you'd come in and you'd go up the steps and your mail and package room would be down on that lower level. Just some more images that we can scroll through. And you'll see similar materials in stone, you know, the concrete flooring, wood walls. And then when you get out into that large area that sits out facing the river, you'll see the stone walls come inside as well. And that's sort of a summary of the project. Bill Reardon is going to step up and he can talk a little bit more about the variances and the intricacies of the site, but I appreciate your time and effort and hopefully you enjoyed it as much as I did.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Regarding your, you said the building's up on a podium, correct?
Yes.
Is the entire building up that way?
Yes. It needs to be.
Is it a water through?
It is a floodable.
Okay.
Podium structure.
And regarding the trails, will you connect to other sites so that it is one continuous trail?
Yes, we have aligned this trail to the designed trail that's at 51 Washington, the Rosemont property.
Okay.
And then we've aligned it at this end of our property as well to carry through.
And we have easements for that?
You will have an easement for that.
Okay.
Train station is, it's not directly across from your.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening. Bill Reardon, Bowler Engineering. So in order to actually do a great project like this, unfortunately, we do need a few variances from the zoning ordinance. Obviously, the biggest aspect of this relief is floodplain. So the current ordinance obviously prohibits the construction of buildings, parking, stormwater, accessways, sidewalks, et cetera. So this is adjacent to the Schuylkill River. It's entirely in the floodplain, but as we had explained, the whole structure is elevated. We have done some preliminary analyses of this and because of the elevated structure, we have no impact on the floodplain elevation in the area. So that's one of the main components that we need to look at in order to be able to get that variance granted and in this case, we're not affecting. Although we're putting a structure there, we're not affecting the floodplain elevation. So we're not negatively impacting any properties upstream or downstream from us. Another variance is for the length of the building. This district limits the overall bulk of the building to 300 feet. Obviously, given the unique nature of this property, very thin and long, we have something that's significantly longer. The length of this building is approximately 700 feet from one end to the other. So rather than have a number of individual buildings, what we've done is obviously we have a large parking structure that is that overall width, but based on the architecture that you've seen, we've created it so that we're breaking it up. So while it is 700 feet long, it doesn't look 700 feet long. The, another relief is for access to the riverfront. So you need to have access points every 500 feet. Given the length of our building, that's 700 feet, we're obviously not complying with that. However, we've got access point on either end, but as Chris had indicated, we have multiple access points along the building itself, so you have public access around the perimeter and then you have private access for the individual residents to get to it. So while we don't have the separation that's required, we have more than the number that otherwise would be provided if we met that separation requirement. There's a requirement for a parking field to have no more than 30 spaces, an individual parking field. We have a small western parking area to the west of the building that is 42 spaces. So it's a rather minor increase above the requirement. Obviously, the majority of the spaces that we are providing for this is within the structure itself. And then we have two other minor variances for sidewalk and for parking within certain buffer distances from our eastern property line. We have sidewalk within the 10-foot buffer and then we have this drive aisle parking area within 15 feet. So as we had explained, this is kind of designed, not necessarily as a parking area, it can be used, but more of a public space. So while it's, those features are in it, we're looking at this more as an amenity than as sidewalk and parking. So that's the, those are the variances that we need. If you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
My only question is how many stories is the building?
So it's four stories, correct?
Four stories over the podium.
Over the podium?
Correct.
Okay, so five, basically.
Five in total.
One level of parking and then four residential levels.
How many parking spots are?
Total over parking spaces? Yeah.
370.
Yeah, just, correct.
Close to 50, or is that total?
That's in, that's in total, correct. Right. So we're meeting, we're meeting the ordinance requirement of at least 1.2 spaces per dwelling unit.
And to clarify, that amenity area is not included in our parking.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So that's this space over here. We don't include that number.
And how, how high off the ground will it be?
How high?
No, you know, the podium.
Oh, yeah. The parking structure itself, I don't know what the final design is.
I think we're still working through that right now, the grading issues, but it should be anywhere from, it'll probably be like 10 feet, I think.
And how is FEMA with all this?
How is FEMA with this? We haven't made a submission to FEMA yet, but we've gone through the steps that we know FEMA would require of us and the data says that we would be able to get approval from them, so.
Ms. Stettler, do you have anything you'd like to add for the project?
Thank you. I would simply like to add that you don't make a submission to FEMA. That's all handled through the borough zoning ordinance and you need to be, your first occupied floor, whether it's your podium or not, has to be at least 18 inches above the base flood elevation of the area. So you're still working through that and you will need to bring appropriate documentation to show that you're not increasing the base flood elevation of the area.
Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will need to make a motion tonight or a resolution to either support the application to the zoning area or not support it or not take any action.
You okay with that?
I would like to make a motion not to take any action.
What's that motion?
We have a motion on the floor to not take any action. Is there a second? Hearing no second, I would need another motion if so inclined.
I'll make the motion to approve.
To send a letter of support.
To send a letter of support to zoning board.
Is there a second?
I'll make that, I'll make a second.
I'm favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, we'll note one opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like it that you.
Ms. Stettler, can you introduce the next applicant?
The second here, application going to the zoning hearing board on May the 13th is for 161 Washington Street. This is Eight Tower Bridge. It's located in specially planned two zoning district and is required, is also subject to floodplain, but this has nothing to do with subfloodplain. The building was recently sold. The applicants put up two very, very large banner signs on the garage to market the building. Banner signs are not permitted in the SP2 district without any kind of relief. A warning letter was sent to the owners of the building, and they have submitted an application to the zoning hearing board to permit the banners for the marketing of the building. Mr. Weiss and representative from Sixth Tower, or from Eight Tower Bridge is here today to answer any questions you might have.
Chris, can I ask you just one question? If I understand correctly, there's no, there's no formal notice of violation issue, so there's no appeal, correct? It's just a variance application?
There is no formal notice of violation. Had there not been a submission of a zoning application, then we would have started enforcement.
Okay, so we're just variances right now, is that correct?
They are requesting the variance to legalize the violation.
Times that are there, yes, okay, thank you.
They're fixing it.
Fixing it.
Oh, good, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ross Weiss. I'm here on behalf of Eight Tower Bridge, but it is now called 161 Washington Avenue. It's being rebranded. It's owned by AREP. AREP is a national office owner and management company. With me tonight, to my left, is Jeff Strupp. He is a vice president of AREP, in charge of construction and project management. AREP owns a number of buildings in the area. This is not their only building that they own. And we apologize to you, Jeff does, because I wasn't involved ahead of time. But he apologizes for putting up the banner. He's very excited about having this new building, and there were banners there before. So he figured, well, we'll just put up a new banner and we should be fine. Chris, doing the thorough job that she always does, pointed out that you have to get permission. There were permission for the prior banners. Just by way of history, you might recall that Eight Tower Bridge was built a pretty good time ago, 18, 19 years. And after it was put up, because of its unique location, it's next to the bridge, it's on ground that is substantially below the bridge, and it is not the easiest building to find. And for those of you that might remember, driving on the bridge even before you were members of council, Don Pulver had obtained zoning relief to put banner signs on the bridge identifying Eight Tower Bridge. And he also put a banner sign on the building. The signs that were on the bridge, the sign was a relatively small sign. It was on a, like a flagpole. But the sign that was on the side of the building is similar to the sign that you are looking at right now on the side of the building. And you might recall that it had a hand with a finger, and it said, move to the top. Chris pointed out that one purpose for the banner sign is to market the building. That's really not the most important purpose. The most important purpose is to enable people to find the building. And because 161 Washington Street now has a new name, and Jeff told me every time he checks Google to see if the name's been changed and if it can be located by putting in 161, it still comes up Eight Tower Bridge. So the purpose of the two banner signs are not just to make people aware that the building's there, that its name is being changed, its branding is being changed, but also to be able to find it. The banner signs are temporary. Now, I can't tell you exactly how long temporary will be because that depends on the final decisions that my client has to make as to permanent signage. And then we will submit an application to the zoning hearing board for permanent signage in the event that the signage that we're requesting is more than what the ordinance permits. Our application on May 13th for the temporary banner signs will include the other signs that are wall signs on the buildings in the borough right now. When I appeared on behalf of Don Pulver to get the hand sign approved, we were able to point out other wall signs on the buildings along the river, on both sides of the river. And you might recall that Don Pulver sold Eight Tower Bridge to the predecessor owner before AREP. And you might recall that there was a banner sign put up that identified the Seven Tower Bridge location, which is even a more difficult location to find because not only is it below the level of the bridge, it's behind Eight Tower Bridge. So the zoning hearing board granted permission for a banner sign on the Eight Tower Bridge garage identifying the location of the Seven Tower Bridge site. When we appear before the zoning hearing board on May 13th, we will bring that all to the zoning hearing board's attention and request a temporary variance for the banner sign pending our submission of a permanent sign package. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
How big is it?
The sign is 14 by 48. It's a billboard size.
And how, do you know how large the previous sign was?
I'm sorry? No, I do not. My recollection, I walk in the borough every Saturday morning, sometimes Sunday morning, too. And I didn't know about the sign. And the guy that I walk with happens to be the manager of Montgomery Township. And he used to live in White Marsh. And he and I walk, and we parked in that parking lot. And we're finishing up our walk, and he says to me, hey, when'd you put that up? And I said, whoa, I didn't, I didn't put that up. And my recollection is, the sign that's there now is pretty close to what was there before. There is a difference. The only difference is that there is a sign on both sides of the parking garage. And I believe that the prior sign was only on the Conshohocken side of the parking garage. But I, my opinion is the signs are similar in size.
Do we know that, Chris? Are they similar in size, this sign?
They're a different shape.
The other one was longer, wasn't it?
Was longer, and this one is square. So they're probably not too far off.
It's not a significant difference.
Well, is this the actual picture of it? Yeah, yeah, that's there now.
I've seen it. It does get your attention.
I didn't hear the question.
It's similar.
Oh, yeah, I think it's similar. It's the same.
Right.
It's securely fastened, but it's not a permanent sign, and it's not permanently fastened. And it's not lit.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion for this?
Motion to send a letter of support, if you're so inclined, to the zoning hearing board, recommending that the banner be permitted.
Can I ask one more question? How long do you plan on leaving this sign up?
We're asking for permission for about a year.
A year?
Only, only because we have to design it, and then we have to file.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Then we have to file another application.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do you permit it? I mean, to pass along in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you. It was nice to see everybody.
You, too.
Ms. Stettler? It's the Chris Stettler Show tonight.
It is.
I'm too tired for anymore. Several years ago, when we received home, when, there's been a change in the home fund, in the home program, which we're gonna be applying for. Previously, you had to prioritize your waiting list. There was involvement from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. There was a lot of concern about getting the biggest bang for the buck in the federal money. So the borough agreed to serve people at or below 50% of the area median income first, or those that were closest to the redevelopment area because the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency wanted economic development along with this. Because of changes in how accounting is done for these programs, they've removed that restriction. So we are now able to go back to what we've always done, which is a first come, first served. So we've been using CDBG funds, which don't have those kinds of restrictions, to do the people, to try and do some of the people that we haven't been able to do with home funds. But in submitting the application, we also have to set, send a copy of our general procedures. And I would like to change this back to going to a first come, first served basis. Especially given the fact that some of our people have been on the waiting list for some time.
Need a motion for that, though?
I would recommend, if you are inclined to make the motion this evening, that way Chris can finalize the application.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. The next item on the agenda is to consider approving a block party request for the 200 block of West Third Avenue. This is Mr. Costa. He was here last year with a bunch of his neighbors. He is requesting to have this event again. Administration has discussed it. We reviewed the event after last year. We have no concerns with them being permitted to host this event again this year. We did, we informed Mr. Costa. He did not have to be present since he was here last year, and he's not asking anything different.
One thing is the, down there at Third Avenue where the.
Yes, so.
TBC.
Yes, so we will.
One side of the street is open.
Yes, so like last year.
Last time, they, they wanted.
I think it was the first year, they closed the whole street, and then last year we kept one side open.
Sorry, okay, okay.
Last year, we kept one side of the street open to, to address the concerns that were expressed, and there were no issues. Was that correct?
No, I thought last year was the first one they had.
Yeah.
They were requesting to close the whole street.
Yeah, and we only gave them half.
Right.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
We're good?
We're good.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mike, do you want to walk through the resolution?
Yeah, sure. So a few meetings ago, council approved a resolution establishing temporary regulations for West Second, turning it into a one-way street, given the construction that's going on at the Keystone Sora site. That resolution expires on May 8th, 2019. So there is a new resolution, another 90-day resolution. We're not going to do a permanent resolution quite yet because it's not quite clear how long it's going to need to be closed for, although we can assume for some time. This resolution would cover you until August 6th, 2019, and again, it would extend the one-way access on West Second Avenue. That is what's before you.
On the motion?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Peters, if you want to do the memorandum of understanding amendment?
Sure. In December, when we closed on the Keystone Sora property, as you'll recall, council, the borough sold to Keystone Property, owned by the borough. The RDA of Montgomery County sold property owned by the RDA at the same time, and we split the proceeds. When we split the proceeds, we entered into a memorandum of understanding whereby the borough would pay back the RDA for the carrying costs that it incurred in connection with the properties. Those carrying costs were $200,000. We always knew that they were $200,000. The RDA had taken some of that $200,000 from monies that were deposited by the purchaser. At closing, it was discovered that those, those proceeds should have gone to, back to the purchaser, not to the RDA, which leaves the RDA with a net, net monies that are owed in the amount of $125,000. We have worked with the RDA to reach an agreement, should council approve the amendment to the memorandum of understanding whereby the RDA would receive the $125,000 in the form of $62,500 being paid back from the borough from the proceeds that we received. And then the RDA has agreed to a payment of $62,500 from, as you'll recall, the fund that we created in connection with the project. So the borough would be paying, again, $62,500, and the RDA would be withdrawing from the Economic Development Fund $62,500. And this is absolutely required by the agreement of sale. There's no discretion necessarily in whether or not we give the money back. We agreed to negotiate in good faith at the closing table to address this, and that's just living up to that promise.
I would make that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and that, that should wrap up the finances from that, from that closing, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. The next item on the agenda is consider approving the release of 444 West Sixth Avenue's financial security escrow in the amount of $5,953.22 minus any final legal, engineering, and administrative fees. This is a property that we are cleaning up from previous operations dating back to 2014. Our engineer has done an evaluation of the site, and based off of the improvements installed, we are recommending release of the remaining escrow funds.
And I'll make a motion to release.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss the proposed revisions to the park and playground rules. Our executive director of operations and our director of recreation services have done an evaluation of our current park rules and our current Chapter 16 of the borough ordinance. So the current rules right now are no smoking, no animals, no alcoholic beverages, no vendors, no glass, no golf, and no littering, and used containers provided. We feel a need that those rules should be listed specifically in Chapter 16 of the borough ordinance, is under Parks and Recreation. And that there also should be a term that's designated that the rules will be set from time to time by Borough Council by resolution. That gives you the flexibility and to amend the rules as needed as you continue to evolve. In addition to them being included in the ordinance themselves, along with that phrase, we are also recommending that new proposed rules be included, and those would be that no bikes be permitted on basketball courts or playgrounds, that there be no motorized vehicles, no charcoal grills, and no helmets on the park equipment, keeping mindful of any ADA requirements. Keep in mind that these recommendations are being based off the fact that you've put large finances into the renovation of your playgrounds and your parks to date. And we are trying to maintain the integrity of those, the surfaces and the apparatuses themselves. Yes.
I have a question. But you can ride a bike in the park, correct?
Just not on the basketball court.
You can ride a bike. It would just be specified to not the basketball court or the playground itself. Like the port in place part, Bob. So the rule will be listed as no bikes on basketball courts or playgrounds.
No offense to the police department, but that's the reason I got involved in council, because when I first had my son teaching him how to ride a bike, they threw me out of the park. They said, you know how to have a bike in a park? What do you want me to ride? Take the kid off Bad Street? So I just want to make sure.
Well, right now, it's not a park rule. It's not a park rule, and we would just be specifying specific location where they would not be permitted.
And also, at South Cliff, I think the signs for no dogs, they have to be changed.
They need to be.
We have to spell it out because it's not working.
Okay.
Okay.
I wouldn't say something. When somebody says, no offense, but.
You know what I meant.
And, so you were offended that we were enforcing the rules, Bob?
Was there a rule in the, there was no bikes in the park back then? This is 32 years ago.
We also wanted to have kids in the infield, so, hey, we're evolving going nicely.
So at South Cliff, I thought we have grills down there. Don't we have?
Yeah, we took them out.
We do not.
How long ago was that?
Oh, jeez, I don't ever remember really.
No, it's been longer than that.
I had one down.
No, we had, at least 10.
10, whatever.
I remember them making burgers out there.
Well, Little League is specific. Little League has a grill.
They have a grill.
But this, this is, that's specific to the concession stand.
Okay.
So this would have to do with the park itself. So this would have to do with the park itself.
There was a brick grill under the pavilion.
All right, that makes sense, though.
For a while, near a basketball court.
Does anyone have any issue with the proposed rules?
No.
Just bigger dog signs.
You need a motion?
I do not, I not need a motion yet. The other thing I would be asking you to consider is implementing a 100% tobacco-free resolution in public areas where children play that will allow the borough to become a designated Young Lungs at Play municipality.
I like that one.
My only question is, how will the police enforce that? Is that going to be a headache?
I think people may police it.
Right. Do you think? I mean, how far will we go with this?
Smoking in the park?
Yeah.
If there's an ordinance, it's just, we have no problem telling somebody they can't smoke there.
Okay. The school districts have done it, too. You can't smoke at football games or anything anymore. Okay. That's all.
Right.
Now I'm all for it, then.
Most people think you can't anyway.
Right.
So on, on May 15th, what will be in front of you is considering to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance amendment, the adoption of the proposed resolution that revises the park rules, and the adoption of the 100% tobacco-free resolution. So no motion is needed this evening, but it'll be back on your agenda for the 15th.
So when we have these signs made up, can we see one before we have them made because...
Absolutely. We can give you a rendering prior to them being finalized.
I think the print has to be bigger, too.
Okay. No problem.
Okay.
I saw something that was two dogs down the path the other day. Yeah, I know, you can't read them. People don't read them.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss the current towing contract. So right now, we have agreements with EVB Towing and Janeway Towing. We have documents that we've been able to retrieve dating back to June of 2006. Council has asked my office to evaluate all operations across the borough, one of these be, one of them being towing itself. So with the assistance of Chief Metz, we've been able to retrieve the one document for EVB Towing that is in existence. And we are asking council, if you are so inclined, that you would authorize myself and the chief to evaluate the current contracts in place and to generate an RFP for towing services for the borough of Conshohocken. What we would be doing, if you would like to move in that direction, is notifying the two outfitters that we currently use that the contract will not automatically review, renew, but rather will extend until the RFP process is complete.
Absolutely.
Okay. If you'd like to authorize us this evening through motion, we can start the process.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
That's great. And so the next item that will be in front of you is the RFP itself for consideration for advertisement. Okay? Great, thank you. President Leonard, I have two items to add to the agenda under manager matters. The first being to consider authorizing the advertisement for a public hearing on the Seven Tower Amendment Project Plan for the Tower Increment Financing District. And I would need that motion this evening, if you're so inclined.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item for addition is to authorize the borough manager to send a letter of request to the Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County for the use of funds for purchase of emergency vehicles and infrastructure projects that was acquired through the sale of the land for the Sora project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll myself on that. Mike?
I got it.
Yeah. We'll note for the record that you've recused yourself from that item. President Leonard, I have no other items.
Okay. May I mention?
Good evening. So this is the reopening of the Riverside Dog Park, and the Dog Park Committee has been working with administration to plan a grand opening, which will be on May 11th. So this is an official invite from the committee to council and residents to join in the fun and the party. The committee has really worked hand in hand with Lauren and Ray to revamp the surface of the park to get rid of, hopefully, continuing mud issue, which has closed the park for a couple months every year. So hopefully, this new surface that's being installed will create much less need to close the park for a long period of time. So the committee's hard at work getting local sponsors and food vendors, and I know they'd love to see you there. So that's the first thing. And the second thing, from Colonial, Rosemary Northcutt sent me an email and said that on May 13th, the school board will hold three meetings at Conshohocken Elementary School. 5 o'clock is the curriculum committee, 6:00 PM is the community relations and student life, safety, and wellness committee, and 7:00 PM is the policy committee. So it's, it's really great that they're having that meeting in Conshohocken.
It is.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
It might be first.
Yeah, I think it is.
Mr. Stoker?
Yeah, I just want to, one thing that we, we had our first parking task force meeting, well-attended. We had a lot of input from the members, and I'm looking forward to the next one.
Good.
Just to let you know that West Conshie was having trouble with their sewer authority bills. That has been rectified. They're looking into possibly getting a new way of billing them. They have to go through Aqua in order to do that. Everything else seems to be going smoothly.
Jane?
I wanted to mention today, if you didn't see it on Facebook, that our Special Olympics in Montgomery County received an award for $100,000 from NRG, which is an integrated power company, and that money will be used to sponsor future events for Special Olympics. And it's really close to our hearts in Conshohocken because of their over 30-year experience being centered at our community center. So it was really a great day for Conshohocken to receive that grant. And also to mention that they are having their restaurant rally, which benefits Special Olympics on May 19th. And it's a wonderful event. It's loads of fun, and if you could all please come out, that would be super. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Mike?
I have nothing.
Karen?
Yanni, thank you for mentioning the school board. That was one that I think is of interest for many of us. Also wanted to add to Bob and the parking task force meeting, the meeting that we had was held on April 24th. All of our committee members attended, and we left there with, tasked with a few items. So Brian Keegney, our engineer, is doing an inventory of the parking, trying to identify some parking opportunities. And the rest of the task force is, we scheduled a due date of May 13th to come back with any of our commercial residential problems and what we see. And then the next meeting is May 22nd.
Chief Metz?
Just a reminder, in your travels, everybody here, lock your cars.
Yeah.
We really got hit hard the other night, and it's usually how that goes. And we actually lost a vehicle because of these. So don't leave valuables in your car, don't have your guns in your car, and lock them.
So you allowed to tell us what area that was?
Yeah, it was down in the lower end, mostly. Washington Street, Montgomery, Millennial, some on, between Hector and Spring Mill on the 400th and the alley, some in Angel Alley, but all down that, that area.
Public comment? No public comment? Meeting adjourned.